Let's call the meeting to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director Mann?
Pleasant.
Marcus?
Here.
Cilio?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor, Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
The invocation is Ken Jones from the Lancaster Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you. We're certainly thankful to be citizens of the United States of America, thankful for the blessings you have given upon this country. We do pray for this council meeting this evening. We pray that it will be an orderly time, a time when matters can be discussed. We pray for wisdom for the council members, that they may deal fairly and justly. We do pray for those here bringing business before the council, that, Lord, they would be courteous and they be mindful of the great privilege we have in this body. We just ask that you oversee it all, and we thank you for the blessings you've given to us. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Councilwoman Marcus, you...
Place your right hand over your heart, let's pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have Daniel Torino? Where's Daniel? Daniel, come on up here. Come up here.
I just want to say that Daniel is eight years old. He's in second grade at Desert Elementary School.
How are you? Here you go, just speak into this.
Hello. My name is Daniel Torino, and today my subject is "God Bless America." God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies to the ocean white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. These are the words to a song we have loved and heard all our lives. But have we realized that this song is actually a prayer? It is a request addressed to God, a request for blessings on our nation. And certainly, our nation has been wonderfully blessed. The whole world recognizes us as the greatest nation on earth. It is the dream of countless millions of people to come here and enjoy the blessings we so often take for granted. We live in a time where not only our nation, but God Himself is under attack from many sources. Now, more than ever, we need to be more alert to the dangers we face and to dedicate ourselves to resisting the forces that would destroy us. Battles are fought in order to give our nation its start. Battles will be needed in order to keep it alive. May God bless us as we strive to preserve the country we hold so dear. Thank you.
We should have him teach at the Leadership Academy. Okay. Now, my favorite people are here. This is the Lancaster High School Robotics Team. These kids are the smartest, most aggressive, nicest, politest killers. Well, no. They took down everybody. Come on up here. Come on. Come on, everybody. You guys left some people at home. You know, on behalf of the City of Lancaster, I can't tell you how proud of you we are. I mean, I was there when you first, the first meeting, remember? And for you to have come this far, well, how far? Come on up here and tell the folks how much you've won so far.
So, we went to two regionals so far this year. In Los Angeles, we won an imagery award for our good looks, I guess. And then, uh...
I think that was it.
And then in Denver, we won another imagery award. I mean, if we win it twice, we must be doing something, right? And then, we won engineering inspiration, which is like second place for our community outreach and stuff. And then, we won first place with the robot. So, our robot drove and got first place. So, it's pretty good.
You know, I had the thrill of being a little bit of, watching a little bit of this and how it started. They got a very short window. You know, they're given a video of what they have to accomplish, what they have to build, and what the tasks are. And then they have just a little short window to make it all happen. And it's incredible to me how little time they give you and how much organization goes into this. I mean, they could launch a spaceship. They are that organized. And in fact, they had the NASA engineers helping them, so they actually could launch a spaceship. They are truly a remarkable group of young people. On behalf of the city, we have a proclamation for you and commending you for your accomplishments and your positive influence with, in the community. I could read it all, but I think it would take away from what you said. I think that of all the groups that I've had a chance to be a part of, this group excites me the most. They're going to accomplish incredible things. Keep an eye on them, because they're, to do this at this age is truly remarkable. Gotta do the pose.
If the parents want to come down, you can come down and take pictures as well.
Oh, by the way, I invited them to a barbecue at my house. I don't know if you've got the invitation yet, but my wife is working on it, so you can have a party there. And hopefully, we won't get arrested for some Brown Act violation or something. But we're gonna have a great time, okay? Thank you.
Mayor Paris.
Do you want more people down here? Okay, come on.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
They're also getting ready for the next leg of the competition, which is they go to Atlanta for the next, well, tomorrow, for three days, four days.
So, have you scouted the other teams?
A little bit.
Can you beat 'em?
Well, maybe.
Really?
Oh, it's, this is what they give you for winning.
Wow, look at that. Thanks, guys. See you later. Bye-bye.
Okay, anything to be removed?
No. RCC 3. Anything else? I was gonna do, that's on the consent calendar. Let me do it now.
You can do it now. You can ask for a continual.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have nothing to be removed, but you want to talk about the emergency?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah.
Okay.
No, I think the... All right, let me do this first, and then I'll get to PH 4, okay? On the Agency Consent Calendar, we want to take RCC 3 off because Ken Mann has a conflict.
I have a conflict of interest in relationship to RCC 3. I own property two blocks over from, or three blocks over from this location. If I got the address correct.
So, do I have a motion on the other two?
Move adoption RCC 1, 2, and 4?
Second.
I'll second that.
Is it unanimous? You want to recuse yourself, or you want to just abstain?
While this gets in direction, Mr. McEwen, should I leave the room, given the circumstances? If you just step away from the dais?
Sure.
We can take the action, then you can come back.
Do we need a measuring tape, or...
If you have one.
Can we move to adopt RCC 3, please?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Is it unanimous with Councilman Mann? Out of the room, and he is now back.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we put on the agenda and amend the agenda to add New Business 3 Resolution Number 0928 about the prison. The information that we got was after the time of the posting, and there is some urgency to that. So, I'll move that we amend the agenda and add that to NB 3.
Second. Second, then. Let's vote. Is it unanimous? Okay, the consent calendar, anything to be removed? No, sir.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I second that motion.
I need one more vote. Thank you.
And it's unanimous. I want to take, was it item number three or four?
PH 4.
PH 4 off. I want the, I want to give the Board of Realtors a chance to look at this and, or whatever they call themselves these days, what is it, GABRA?
GABAR.
GABAR. In light of the fact that they have those magazines that sell houses and stuff, I want them to look at it and see if they have any comments before we actually vote on.
Do you want to take it off the agenda, in which case we'd have to renotice?
Continue.
Or can you continue? Continue it till the first meeting in May?
Okay, I anticipate some changes, is all. Is that not a problem? Okay, is there a motion to move it to first meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Going on to public hearing item number one. Randy Williams, Director of Public Works. We're now opening the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, excuse me, pleased this evening to bring back to you for the first time in many months, a recommendation for annexation into some of our benefit assessment districts. This is, to me, good news, because it means that we do have development going on in the community, which may not be evident to others. We will have three separate actions tonight, three separate staff reports before you, four annexations. Each of them is much the same. Let me start then with the Drainage Maintenance District. We have a total of four properties that will be proposed for annexation this evening. In each case, the property owner has petitioned to the city, a request that they be included in the Drainage Maintenance District. They paid their fees and filing expenses and so forth, and staff is convinced that these properties are ready to be annexed. As I said, there are a total of four properties. Two of them are residential properties, single-family homes. The other two are commercial properties. If the council has no questions, staff would recommend that you adopt Resolution 09-23. We will then go forward with filings necessary with the county for them to be added to the district.
Any questions? Any public hearing, I mean, any speaker cards?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-23.
I'll second that.
And it's unanimous. Public hearing item number two?
Yes, sir. Public hearing number two has to do with the Lancaster Lighting Maintenance District. The same four properties that were annexed in your last action are proposed to be annexed into this action. Again, two single-family residential properties and two commercial properties. Everything is in order. Staff recommends that council adopt Resolution 09-24, and we will proceed with those annexations.
Any questions? Oh, do I have to go back to close the public hearing, or do I close it on this one? I close it. Okay. First, I need to know if there's any speaker cards.
Yeah, there's no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Let's close the public hearing. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move we adopt... Resolution Number 0924.
Second.
And it's unanimous. Okay, public hearing item number three. Let's open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. This annexation action is for a single property. It happens to be the two new hotels that are just off of Valley-Sinco Way. And the action would be to annex them into the Landscape Maintenance Benefit Assessment District. As the council is well aware, there are considerable landscaping improvements in that area, and this will allow the Benefit Assessment District to collect the necessary funds to maintain those landscape improvements. If the council approves, staff would recommend the adoption of Resolution 09-25 for us to go forward with these annexations.
Thank you. Any questions? Any? No speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Let's close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution 0925.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. New business. Bob Green. Make this good, Bob.
Mayor Paris and members of the city council, we have before you a request for transfer of funds of $75,000 that would go into providing for Leadership Academy that would be put on by the Harvard professors associated with the Cambridge Leadership Associates. Professor Marty Linsky, author of the book, um...
Leadership on the Line.
Leadership on the Line, thank you. He has a new book coming out too in May, which will be incorporated into this training. He and a principal that also is a professor in the Kennedy School of Government, Professor Ron Hyfitz, will also be associated with this program. It's a very unique program. Out of the $75,000 that would be spent, the city would absorb $25,000 of that that would be used to kind of encourage people to participate in the program. Fees generated by anywhere between 20 and 30 students would allow us to recoup most of the costs of this program. Very optimistic, based on the calls that we're already receiving from an article in the paper and from a little bit of information that's gone out in the community, that we would have a very good chance of recovering all $75,000. The program's very unique, and I think one way to put this in perspective is, if you look at the major employers in this community, if you look at some of the aerospace companies, they're the people that can afford to do a program like this and essentially have their own universities. They go to a private location and in fact, use Professor Linsky and others from Harvard, Kennedy School of Government, as well as other universities, to put on programs for their definite professionals in their organizations, directors, department heads, that type of thing with the various aerospace companies. But a local company, a local individual, somebody interested in providing better leadership in an organization, or somebody who has an interest in politics, could not afford this on their own. That's what this program does. This program levels a playing field that if you are a small company, you now, all of a sudden, have access to Harvard's Leadership Academy, and you can get expertise and instruction that you would probably never be able to afford on your own, or wouldn't have that opportunity. And here, it would take place in our own backyard. What Harvard is offering is a program on adaptive leadership, of which Professor Hyfitz and Linsky are experts, noted throughout the world, based basically on what they present on this area of expertise. They've done this in countries throughout the world, as well as companies throughout the United States, and major companies. And here in Lancaster, all of a sudden, we would have this opportunity, which is very unique. So, what we're looking at is this program would launch in June, on the 19th, 20th, and 21st. Three fairly intense days as they go through their program, provide very intense instruction, that people would get an opportunity to learn different skills that they may not have learned in the past. Then they would have a four-to-six-month period following that, where what they would do is work on a project or a program in small groups and in teams, learning and practicing the various skills they learned in the first session, which would then be followed at the end of the four to six months, with another three-day intensive session of culminating exercise, bringing back the issues and programs they were working on, and hopefully develop something that would benefit the entire community. Really follows dual tracks here, that we're looking at both people with political aspirations, as well as those who are just looking at leadership in their organization, company or enterprise, that will make them a better leader, make them a better boss, whatever it might be, to make their company more successful. It's a very unique program. Very few cities participate in something like this, but a number of very, very successful companies. And as I researched their site and talked to their business manager who puts this together, there's about 10 countries throughout the world who participate. South Africa, Iceland, Canada has a division, it works with Harvard on this. So, you're getting some expertise that typically would never be found here in the city. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks and be available to answer any questions you may have about this program.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Briefly, how many people you think would go through the program? If we put, what's the maximum number we could put through at this price?
We're looking at around 30 people that would go through this. Based on initial reactions of what we're hearing, even from the article today, a number of companies have contacted us, as well as individuals, I think we're going to come very close to that number. We should be able to hit it. That's why I'm pretty optimistic about recovering the $75,000 that we would put into it. That would be the first year. Hopefully, we would follow up with a second year at some point and end up doing this as many years as we see that it has benefit in the community.
Comment? Comment, Green? You know, once again, I'd like to thank the mayor for, and also Bob Green, but especially the mayor, I know he's been talking about this for some time now and being instrumental in bringing this forward with his connections. And it just shows, again, Lancaster is on the cutting edge throughout the nation, not only in our stimulus plan, in law enforcement, and research and development, in energy, but now also in leadership and education, and businesses that look to coming into a community, look for things like that in order to come in. And I think it's just an economic engine. It's a great job.
Again, you can thank the mayor. The mayor made the original contact with Marty Linsky. And Marty dovetails the program based on what the community is interested in, and the mayor had laid out a pretty good foundation for this.
I would also like to go on record here that it makes you feel very comfortable that we're in a position to move forward in a positive light, given the circumstances of where some cities are at. And definitely, being a part of two historical, some of the largest restaurant chains in the world, and having the ability to attend courses like this, and clearly, I can see, just like you said, you used aerospace as an example, but when we take a look inwardly and take a look at the rest of the individuals that maybe don't work for an aerospace company, then those opportunities aren't available. And based on what you said, I feel very comfortable that hopefully, we can recoup all of our dollars. And then it's a sum zero game, but yet, we get the benefit of the leadership skills that maybe are passed on to someone here in the community.
Absolutely. The community benefits through this, because you do create better managers, better leaders, more successful companies. And the one thing that I saw very clearly, when you look at the information that Harvard has on their website, that they pass forward to people that go through this program, it's incredible information. I mean, really great leadership quality information that makes a difference between success and failure.
I'm all for it. It's a great idea.
I want to correct a few things. I must have misspoke in the, when we first announced this. And I was quoted in the paper as saying that I made some mistakes in the appointments to the commissions. That's not what I said. I don't believe that's true. What I said was, is that in the 25 years that I've been engaged in politics, I've made a few mistakes in people that we supported. It wasn't directed at the current commissions, just so we're clear. The value of the program, I think, is going to, you know, one of the things that we certainly recognize is, we're faced with the requirement of an incredible amount of innovation to meet the coming challenges. And I think that if we get this program up and running throughout the community, that innovation's going to happen much quicker, much smoother, and much more creatively. And it's really what this is designed for. The program, the way we envision it, you can't buy the program, because there's nobody giving it. And Harvard recognizes that, that this program is going to be the template for what they offered other cities. So, it's rather experimental in that regard. To actually go to the JFK School of Business and do a program similar, one is, it's hard to get accepted to them, and then the expense is overwhelming. You know, it starts out at about 12:05, and then you have to include transportation costs, living costs, and being away from work for several weeks. So, this is really a unique opportunity. Of all the things that we've done so far, this is the one that excites me the most, as far as the long-term ripple effect that I see for the entire valley. And I'm glad we're already getting a response for it. Also, I tend to talk in terms of politics, because I guess that's where my interest is, but the, this is actually designed for something far broader. You know, we're expecting to see that the nonprofit organizations that have a significant impact in the community, we're going to make arrangements for them to be able to attend, for them to send people to it. We expect that the school districts are going to be sending people to it. It's far broader than politics. It's going to, I mean, like I said, I really think it's the most exciting thing we're doing right now. So, we'll see how it works. But it is clearly experimental.
Everybody got their speaker cards in? The rule is, the speaker cards have to be in before the first speaker. They're all in?
Yes.
Okay. And so, let's open the speaker cards then.
Thank you.
And you did a magnificent job on this. I mean, really, the only thing I gave you was an idea, and you expanded that idea into something wonderful. Robert Teller?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Robert Teller, and I'm opposed to this. I'm a product of some similar education program, based by Boeing in 1970 in Seattle, Washington. And the problem is, the people take advantage of the program, go through it, get educated, and then they find another job someplace else. You can't retain them. I came down here and went to work for Lockheed. At age 30, I became a supervisor. I went through their program. A lot of your major manufacturers have a similar program. They may not use Harvard, but they do have similar programs, and they are very effective in that leadership. But, the problem is, after you expend this money, you can't retain them. You've got to sign them to a contract right away, or they'll go off and get a better-paying job, or more lucrative someplace else. Now, there is a book. I don't know if you're aware of it, Lee Iacocca, Where Have All the Leaders Gone? You were talking about leadership. You yourself got more prominently involved because of the crime in our Lancaster city. You're one of the leaders that stepped forward. And Iacocca, in his book, says there are nine points of leadership. Curiosity, creativity, communicate, character, courage, conviction, charisma, and competent. And the last one, you can't be a leader if you don't have common sense. You can't teach that in any college. You can't put it on a book. Okay? Iacocca also states further, and rightly so, that leadership is formed in times of crisis. You step forward in a time of crisis. We had a crime problem here in Lancaster, and you seem to be on top of it. You seem to be accomplishing something. Whether you make a mistake, or any of the council members make a mistake, we've had some very good leaders in this area. I don't think they went through one of these councils, one of these schools, but several of them stepped forward, red hand when we needed a city, and he fought for it. He's still active. He got our Route 6 signs up as a historic route. There's just a lot of people that come forward in a crisis. They may not have an education, and that's my statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Scott Pelka?
I am adamantly opposed to the city spending money for this program. I am adamantly opposed to the city spending money for this program. The city of Palmdale has a program called Partners for a Better Palmdale. It essentially accomplishes the same thing, and anybody's allowed to attend that from either Lancaster, Palmdale, or anyplace else for that matter. There are organizations around Lancaster currently, right now, like Toastmasters, that give people the ability to learn, to speak in front of groups, to better themselves. There's also SCORE, there's also the Better Business Bureau, that has programs for allowing people to come and learn to better their business or their business associations. The city of Lancaster should not be supplementing any kind of a program whatsoever. I am also very bothered by the fact that there are, there will be two people from the city that will be picking the people who will be going to this. There's a stance of possibility there of also favoritism, and I'm adamantly opposed to the possibility of favoritism, especially since this appears to be a, say, this appears to be something put forth by yourself to possibly promote the Runner, Visco, Gilli political machine that's prevalent here in the Antelope Valley. That is all I have to say.
I don't think I'm going to let Runner and Visco attend this, just.
You better charge him for it.
Thank you, Mr. Pelka. Nicole Parson?
Hi.
Hi.
I oppose too. The reason why is because of what they said, and the unemployment rate already here in our valley, in our nation, and there's appropriations set by the state for, that recognize these programs for apprenticeships. There's, the state, the county has some too. I found those in the bills and acts and all that, but I think that if, was this a public notice for a bid, because, because I think, everyone's opposed, but I think I have one better, but, so, I mean, so can other people maybe put in bids or their example? Because, because for the same amount of money, my tool could serve at least five thousand compared to his. And I just wanted to know, is there, could, could other people submit their bids? Because it's not fair for just fifty people. Hopefully, I will be in one of those, now, fifty people. Well, because my tool, it's for all ages and users, and individual students or people can discover new arenas of careers, expand their normal networking boundaries, and determining the possibilities. It helps assist, advise, it is a tool to guide, and for connections, for jobs and careers. And also, the LA Unified School District is requesting this format to break the conformities of these global urban times, and that a tool for the purpose that'll serve ninety percent kids and ten percent adults, and that's exactly what this tool is. So I oppose kids. So what about the bid, or can we all submit something, since we all oppose?
You'd have to talk to the city manager about what the bidding process is, but I'm certain that we will consider anything that you put forward. Okay. But that is the procedure, is you'd have to go through the city manager first.
Okay, so you guys, I mean, so you guys are going to, thank you. So you guys are going to bid, you're going to vote on this new business, or?
No. In regards to this program, this program, I hope, is going to go forward.
Yeah, yeah.
In regards to subsequent programs, that would be something else, okay?
So, yeah, so do I. Let it go forward, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I was really excited when I saw the thing in the paper today about leadership. We can all stand to improve our leadership skills. Mr. Mayor, I've been kind of saving this one for you, and I see that you've learned this tonight. Harry S. Truman once said, "Never kick a fresh turd on a hot day," and that would be the only contribution I would make to your leadership style. Now, we have some real problems.
It should be.
And we're going to need some innovation in leadership. This is, this is very, very true. I wrote a letter to the editor for the unification of the two cities, and this is part of what I wrote. "The world has changed so fast, in ways never considered possible a short year ago, that most sane people are willing to consider what was unthinkable and crazy just a short while ago. And while people may be stunned and confused by it all, they are not stupid. There is no rectifying that the loss of confidence in the financial system at the core of the economic meltdown can be solved by restoring everything back to the way it was." So, we face a lot of challenges, and we're going to need innovative approaches. I was reading this new book I got at the library sale, and it's very interesting. It's about the spy network that George Washington put together in the beginning of the revolution, and some tragic misstarts. I went to the Tea Party rally, and the word "revolution," "change," there's something in the air. When the TARP and the stimulus money runs out, there's going to be times when people go unpaid. There are rougher times ahead than I think most people see. I've always looked at leadership like being a good manager. A good manager must manage the business, but he also must provide a safe environment for people to work in, and help people develop. So this is where this leadership comes in. But in the heart of leadership, the essence of leadership is vision, and that's one thing that we have to rethink, the shape of the world we find, and what our goal is going to be. And I just want to read this one cute thing in here real quick, about this spy hunter, Major Roger, Robert Rogers, who captured Nathan Hale at the beginning of the war. It says that "he was subtle and deep as hell itself, a low-cunning, cheating, backbiting villain. Perhaps so, but he was an expert tracker, soldier, and spy catcher." Now, I think, and I'll talk a little bit more about this later, that most people don't have adequate understanding of the troubles we are going to face, or the opposition, and the nature of the opposition. So this is where I would want to contribute something to having people come out of their comfort zones and see the other side. And we'll talk more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay. Closing the public comment. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I address one thing. I think our first speaker, about citizens of the Antelope Valley taking the class, and taking those skills and leaving, given the level of interest that Mr. Green said the community expressed, and that would give a substantial amount of the income back. If they learn the leadership skills and get a chance to grow and leave, so what? If they stay, fantastic. There's no harm done. And it's only a benefit for wherever they eventually land.
I move that we make the appropriations of seventy-five thousand dollars and transfer from the accounts to, for this Leadership Academy.
I'll second that.
Didn't like the first vote?
It's kind of neat.
It is unanimous. And now, we'll hear from City Attorney Dave McEwen.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, before you, the closed ordinance, which would amend Section 2.04 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, dealing with the appointment of the Vice Mayor. The purpose of this ordinance is to bring the Municipal Code into conformity with the practice that has been followed since the city started electing the mayor directly.
I'm sorry, Mr. McEwen, is your microphone on? It's hard for me to hear you.
I'm sorry, it was not on. The purpose of the amendment is to bring the Municipal Code into conformity with the practice that's been followed by the council since the mayor was directly elected by the citizens. Since then, the mayor has made an appointment confirmed by the council, and it has not followed the procedures in Section 2.04, which, not a problem, because you can change things anytime you want to change them. So it's a technical change, just to catch another section that needs to be brought forward and modernized, and brought into conformity with actual practice.
Any questions?
Just to be clear, this is not similar how we've treated Planning Commission, Architectural Commission. This is not to conform to the state law. This is brought forth to change the current procedure.
Correct. This has nothing to do with that particular provision. It's really to bring it up to speed with what we are actually doing here.
Do we have any speakers on this?
Well, you know we have at least one.
Now, I'll hold off till after our speakers. Anyone else? Okay, let's open the speaker cards. Any communications?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Pelka?
Reading this, I'm not sure if I should come up here and approach you, and bow to you, call you king, call you your lordship. I don't know, you know, do women come up here and curtsy you? Because?
We have a mental health department in this city. You might want to talk to them first.
Mental health department? I'm not sure I need the problem. Some other people around here might. But the thing that I'm looking at here, basically, if we've been appointing the Vice Mayor by whoever's been on the council the longest, and now all of a sudden, it's being changed to whoever suits your desires or needs, as it were, it seems a little bit contrite, as far as, you know, kind of a slap in the face to the citizens here, and also to the other council members who may have been on the council for whatever length of time, if they may be there, and if you just do appoint whoever you feel like appointing, to suit whatever political gain that you may, are trying to, are trying to accomplish, is sort of a slap to the face of all the citizens here in Lancaster. Now, I also noticed on here, it says, "The Vice Mayor shall serve at the pleasure of the Mayor." Well, that's, I don't even want to think about that. It's poking my mind's eye of that one. But, you know, when is this going to stop? When are we going to stop here, at the point of view, trying to control everything and everybody in this city? You know, by trying to rewrite the, what apparently has been law here since the city was, was set up? You know, I don't understand. You know, it's.
You want to respond, or is that one of those rhetorical questions you'd like to ask?
You can respond if you want to.
First of all, Mr. Pelka, I did not bring this motion forward.
Who did?
This wasn't created by me. No, no, I get to talk when you ask me to respond, okay?
No, I'm asking you who did.
But you can add that to the end. But right now, I'll respond to what you initially said. And as far as when is this going to end, the fact that we are complying with the state law, the state law says that I am required, I am obligated, it is part of my responsibility to appoint the commissions. That wasn't something I created. That was something our legislator, legislatures created many years ago. The fact that the city was not in compliance when I took office does not mean I shouldn't do it, it means I should do it with all due haste. That's the way cities are run. Now, I understand that some people have a great deal of difficulty when they are confronted with change, but get used to it, because we have got to change most of the things we do. As to this particular ordinance, I kind of like the ordinance, simply because I have to work so closely with the Vice Mayor. But as to who brought the motion forward, I'm not quite sure. It was not me. Do I agree with it? Yeah, I do. Because right now, I am working incredibly closely with Vice Mayor Smith. He is exceptionally smart. He is an incredible advisor, and I have absolutely no reservation whatsoever in having him attend things that I'm not able to attend. He performs the role of a Vice Mayor with exceptional ability. And whenever I find somebody with exceptional ability, in my private life, in my professional life, and in my public life, I like to hold on to them, and I like to use them as much as I can, in the roles that they have shown exceptional abilities in. Now, I can understand that you might disagree with how Vice Mayor Smith performs, and I don't know what to tell you. It's not your decision, it is mine, as to whether or not I think he is performing the role of a Vice Mayor sufficiently for me to entrust him with the role of the mayor when I'm not present. I hope that answers your question.
To me, it's a slap in the face to every council member sitting up here.
I don't think any one of them, I don't think any one of them feels the slap in the face. Every one of them have professional obligations, which would interfere with their ability to perform this role in the manner that I am requiring of people to perform it. It takes about sixty hours a week, and that's just the reality of it. You know, it's an incredibly difficult thing to lead a city, especially a city in these circumstances, meaning the economy, meaning the changes that are occurring in the valley. All of the challenges that we are confronted with are not easy to deal with. Now, I hope that answers everybody's questions about this. If any of the council members feel offended, they have not in any way expressed that to me, and now's their opportunity to do so. I mean, that's why we have a discussion, and that's why we vote. Okay?
Still a slap in the face.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just reiterate something I said during the staff report portion, is that this ordinance is not a change of current practices, or for that matter, the practices that have been followed by the council for the last fifteen years. It's, it's the same. It's just memorializing those practices. So, this is no real change, it's just changing the words on the page to match what, in reality, has taken place.
Thank you. Any discussion?
One, I'm going to disagree with Mr. McEwen's interpretation somewhat, but it won't change the discussion a lot. The ordinance has been on the books that the council member with the longest continuous service would serve as Vice Mayor. There's, it goes on to talk about that that council member could also decline the opportunity to serve. I would look at the practices of the past, given the level of friendship and cooperation that had gone on this council, at least in the time that I've been here, as, given that every vote for Vice Mayor, including our last one, was unanimous, that, I took that unanimous vote as the council member whose turn it was declined the opportunity. The philosophical difference that apparently I have with the mayor is that I think it's a, one, it's positive that you have a rotation for the Vice Mayor, and that it exposes each council member to the opportunity to step up and lead a bit when the mayor is absent and has other commitments. Two, I think there is a level of professionalism among this council and previous councils, that they recognize the time commitment, forty, fifty, sixty, sixty hours a week, that it would require to be an effective Vice Mayor. And I think they're professional enough to say that when they don't have the ability to do that, given their work and professional commitments, that they're adult enough to step back and decline the nomination. That's enough reason for me to leave the current ordinance well enough alone.
Anyone else?
Yeah, obviously, this change of
Yeah, obviously, this change of what I read on my page here in my book provided, I have to say that I actually concur with Councilman Cilio as well. But I have a different spin on it, I guess, or a different take in the fact that I'm actually proud to say that I sit on the city council now that we've turned the page for one year, and I think we've made some big strides. As most of the people know, that I'm involved with business, and one of the things that you don't do is when you're faced with difficult times, whether we bring up the conversation about crime, or we bring up the conversation about section eight, or maybe even some more troubled times fiscally moving forward, it's bad business to change the leadership. What I am the biggest concern of is changing the current ordinance, the way I read it, to what happens in the future when this makeup of this team of five changes, and we're not fortunate enough to have the strong team led by Mayor Paris. That's the part that troubles me. And, you know, I concur with Mr. Cilio based on what he said. I myself would be in support of table in this. I would actually make the nomination of Ron Smith, and that may shock some people. And I think that possibly we would get, at this stage in time, we would probably get a 5-0 vote. If we leave it as it moves forward, I would vote no, not in opposition of Mayor Paris and not in opposition to Ron Smith, but only in opposition of what lays in the future when the makeup of the city council changes and maybe the wrong person at the helm takes over and they get a deputy to their side, and things do not move the way things need to move in the city. So I just want to make sure that I go on record and be clear, so...
My understanding is if they don't like who I pick, they can refuse to confirm them, right?
That's correct. Yeah, even under that scenario, there's still three other council members who would control who the vice mayor would in fact become.
So I don't see how it's not a decision of the council. In this particular case, what we're voting on right now is just the ordinance. We're not voting on Ron Smith, although I want it clear that that's who I am going to nominate. If we leave it as is, it would go to Sherri Marcus as the next in order, and my understanding is Sherri does not want the position at this time. The, just so we're clear as to everything that's going on.
Well, if that's the case, why don't we go ahead and leave it like it is in this call for the vote, and I'll make the nomination, and we'll see where the numbers lie. It looks like to me that I'm speculating about the vote.
We didn't put it on the agenda, so we can't do that tonight.
Next, it'll be on the agenda, the appointment of the vice mayor will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
No, again, so that I state my position is, and I guess we could get into the interpretation of the reading here, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the way that the whereas in the reading, I'm making an interpretation that that's not the case. And based on that, again, I fully support Mayor Paris and Ron Smith moving forward as the current team of mayor and vice mayor, and I would make that motion. But what I don't want to do is change the makeup of the way I interpret this. And so from that, I want to make sure that everybody understands if we leave it on the books the way, on the way it is proposed, not the way I am reading it as it currently is, my intention is to vote no. And again, this is not a slap in the face to Rex because I have great respect for what's been accomplished, and I'm no dummy, and I have no intentions of breaking up the team that's working. Because it's clear to me that there's a system that's been forged, whatever the case may be, and we've made a lot of headway over the last 12 months, and I wouldn't want to see us, I think that whether it's Sherri, or it's Ed, or myself, regardless of whether or not we had time, and again, this is my opinion, and I don't want either Mr. Cilio or for that matter Sherri to take offensive, be offended by this statement. I think that what serves best for this city is to leave it intact the way it is. And I think that regardless of whether we had time, I don't think that would make a difference. If somebody else here had a different commitment of time, I just don't think that that's the correct dynamics. And I don't want to see us take any steps back. So maybe I'm making the wrong interpretations, but I think in the past I've made some interpretations where Mr. McKeon, not that we've debated it, that I've been opposed to you, and that's the way I'm reading it tonight, and my preference is to leave it alone, and whether it's that way or not, then I want to make sure that everybody understands my intentions is to vote no and why. And I believe then ultimately we'll still get to where we need to get.
Can I say a few things?
Of course.
Thank you. Let's, and I thank you very much for the compliment, Councilman Mann, and I know where you, your position is, Councilman Cilio. When you took it, you were jumped in front of two people, but it was like everybody declined so that you could take that spot, and same with Mr. Vesacki also. But I think what we need to do is exactly what you said, Councilman Mann, is step back and think of the future. And that's how I view this. If anybody knows historically why this convoluted ordinance was actually written, there was, there were two people on the council, and it was a very contentious council, and they wanted to make sure that they were never vice mayor as long as they lived or were on the council. So when you read this thing, it's messed up. Take me out of it if I'm not the vice mayor. Rex is not the mayor. We're talking about a whole new council in the future, okay? The elected mayor of a general law city should choose their vice mayor, who is their team member that's working with them to move everything forward. No slight on anybody else, but in the future, I don't want my elected mayor having to pick somebody else that he doesn't want to work with. That's like saying that we used to do that with our country. The vice president was from a different party than the president. Guess what? We changed it. It doesn't work, okay? And so that's how, that's how I feel about it, reading it, taking the personalities aside, looking at the future. The best thing for a general law city that has an elected mayor is to allow them to pick the person that is going to be their confidant and work with them. If we were a general law city that didn't have a strong elected mayor, and we were five council members, like Santa Clarita, you rotate the mayor. But we don't. Luckily, we have a strong mayor position, and we have a strong mayor that's leading. And I think if you look at historically why this ordinance was written, and it's a pretty messed up ordinance too, when you read it, it's pretty convoluted, I think historically then you know why it's like that. And that's why we never followed it.
Did you write that, Mr. McKeon?
Yes, sir. I did.
You're not going to vouch for it, are you?
It's complex, not convoluted.
We're going to turn the mic off now.
You can pick your own syntax, okay?
It's a debate that is old as the...
Right, we can continue to debate this.
But you have a couple issues I want to...
Sure.
You know, because we started out so contentious, you know, I mean, it's no secret, there were two sides to this council. There was us three and you two, and for a year, we've been working through that. And I think I sometimes have given the impression that I don't want to hear the debate. I really do want to hear the debate. I mean, I don't think this is a clear, clear-cut, you know, any idiot can see the answer issue. I mean, it's one that can be debated. Personally, I think that what will happen if, at least I know what will happen if I'm the mayor and I'm uncomfortable with the vice mayor. What happens is I, it becomes informal. You know, I use staff people. I use interns. I use, you know, you just, and I think it's more vibrant when the elected officials are the ones leading the city. And that's difficult to do in the face of contention, although that contention that we started out with is evaporating. The other part, you know, if we're going to debate it and discuss it, let's discuss it all. Whoever is the vice mayor going into an election, it's a huge advantage, you know?
Sure.
I don't want to run from that. And I think maybe that's an undercurrent to all of this. But the fact of the matter remains, regardless of advantages or disadvantages or anything else, I think united leadership is better than divided leadership, and if the people don't like the direction, then they should get rid of the leadership. They shouldn't weaken it. And I think that is the alternative of the mayor, whoever that mayor is, not appointing their vice mayor, is you have the, you have a more likelihood of a weaker leadership. And I think that is the far greater sin, for what it's worth. But I certainly understand the other point of view. I mean, the founders of our country agreed with you at the time of the founding, so for what it's worth.
Mayor Paris, I'd just like to say, as I listened, is in my mind, I was thinking, you know, I have no aspirations. I don't feel threatened by this.
We have great aspirations for you, Councilwoman Marcus.
No. And the other point was that I was thinking if I were in the position of mayor, I would want to be able to choose my own vice mayor, and the example as president and vice president. You want to pick that person that you're going to partner with, so I'm at agreements with it. I just wanted to make that clear.
And imagine, Mr. Pelka, if I was president.
Oh, my gosh.
At least the pirates would be quaking.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any pirates, would we?
One last comment. Unfortunately, I think last year when someone, when I think people went to the polls, I think there was some unclarity then, at least from where I was standing, of what that would look like. And now maybe we are putting some clarity to it. So from that, I've already made my statement about how I'd like to see things proceed. And then maybe when we come up to the next election, that might be a good time to make that ordinance change, ordinance 922, and so that people are clear when they go to the polls and vote, that there's a clarity or an understanding that they're going to get or potentially they could get what we're talking about tonight. So obviously, now I've said my piece, I don't, I don't want to belabor the conversation. I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that I fully support the two that are immediately set into my immediate left. I just think it's just good business practices. I think we're blessed. I'm glad of the milestones. Everything that I ran for, I appreciate Ron's hard work as well as Rex's leadership because we've just about knocked most of those things down, and we're working on all of them. And I'm kind of happy. So I don't know if the public is, but I sure am. But I just want to make sure that there's clarity that next time when we go to the polls, that there's a full understanding there that when we elect the mayor, potentially what is going to take place. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number 922 for this reason, because, what's that? Introduce. Introduce. Is, is that, seeing that, what everybody said on the dais already, and seeing that Ms. Marcus, who would be the next one in line according to the ordinance because of where she was sworn in and the timing and everything, it doesn't, it's not going to change my position or change what's going to go on at our next meeting. This is going to change the future of how the city governs, and I think that's important for the people who are going to be in leadership when we're all gone. So I'll make that motion.
Do we introduce a second?
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Marcus in favor, Vice Mayor Smith in favor, Mayor Paris in favor, Cilio and Mann opposed. Councilman Cilio and Mann opposed. It passes.
You know, Rex, we actually had a different vote this time around. Did you notice that?
That's right, we did. We did. I expect to see something in the newspaper about this. This is momentous.
Oh, fun. Oh, fun. Fun, fun, fun.
Okay, going on to the council agenda. Is Mr. Mann here?
We have...
What? Am I missing something?
We added a resolution as the next new business item, new business three.
Who's presenting that?
You can, you were...
Why don't you do it?
Put this on together.
You want to go ahead and do it?
Sure. Okay. We, in front of you, members of the council, we have a resolution. This city and this valley and Sheriff Baca and the mayor and all the citizens have worked extremely hard as a team of lowering the crime rate here in the valley. The state prison is now changing the way they do business that might affect us and will affect us. Senator Runner and Assemblywoman Sharon Runner worked very hard at getting this facility as a reception center. And if you don't understand what that means, it means that these people that are coming here are only here for about 90 days, and then they're shipped out to other prisons. They're flipping one of the yards, Yard C, into long-term special needs, and they're going to put about maybe 1,100 inmates here. Long-term means that some of those families that would like to visit all the time move into our community. And we saw last time when the prison came in that our crime rate went up. We also saw, anecdotally, the schools could identify the children that were what they called prison kids, that the kids, kids of families that had moved up here to visit the father that was in the prison. When we changed to a reception center, we also saw a big drop in that also. And so this is just basically a resolution. I think we're going to be sending it to other government agencies, other school boards, the city of Palmdale to all join as the Antelope Valley and sending a message to the state prison secretary, Matthew Kates, that we do not want this change here. So that's the resolution that's put in front of you now. And I would move that we adopt it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Short one. Just a shambles plug. On the city website is something quite similar to this with talking points in a sample letter that you can look at, download, and send to your elected officials and to CDR about how upset we are and you should be about this very issue. And I would encourage all of you to do that if you haven't done so already.
One last thing before we call for the vote. I am so disappointed. We worked so hard to bring the crime rate down, and somebody's got to be foolish to think by making this change, this is not going to put more burden on the city of Lancaster. And I'm just thoroughly disgusted with the intelligence level here, almost as if we need to catch a request for additional funds that are passed due from the previous years that we've had to wrestle with, that's created all the problems in the community at times with crime. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure I said that.
You know, obviously, we have to take a much more aggressive approach in our relationship with the prison. And I don't know if that means some legal action that we might be able to assert. We certainly need to start looking at the economic impact of that prison on us and the social impact in a more statistically relevant fashion, meaning most of what we have is anecdotal. And I think we need to expend some money in perhaps doing it with Palmdale to actually get a true assessment of the true impact so that we can then look and see if we have any options. But the, you know, I've just grown weary of the prison doing what they do to us. It's without any, any discussion, this thing was done without talking to us about it, without consulting us, without trying to mitigate the impact. It was a done deal before they ever met with us, even while they were telling us with one side of their mouth it wasn't. The only reason we found out about it was the Correction Officers Union alerted us to it. And, you know, praise God for them because they live here and they know firsthand the impact those prisoners have on us. I just would like to direct staff to start brainstorming some ideas about how we can start dealing with this prison in perhaps a more adversarial manner than we are, because that's clearly what it is. They are clearly adverse to our interests. And what I mean by that is the Department of Corrections leadership could care less what impact they have on us. And we need to start dealing with that, for what it is. They are not our friends, and they never intended to be our friends, and we should respond accordingly. Yes, sir?
Two quick points. I did get a communication from Palmdale today, that I believe at their council meeting, they're going to also entertain a similar option of formal opposition. And I agree with you, one of the brainstorming ideas we had, Mr. Mayor, was to ask the prison to pay for that study, since it's their responsibility, the state, to see what the impacts are. Because I agree with you on the analytical information, we need statistics.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like a...
Do we have any speaker cards on this one?
All right. Sounds like a possible project for, I don't know, a leadership academy. Possible, possible. We're going to have a few of them. Okay, is there a motion?
I think we have a motion.
Oh, okay. Let's vote. It's terrible getting old, you just can't hold on to the... It's unanimous. Thank you. Oh, we have to have a representative to the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee, you know, the one that's so popular with all the folks in the Antelope Valley. You remember, they approves all the bond construction for Antelope Valley College. It seems like we could use some cooler heads at the moment to bring people together, and with that in mind, I am requesting that Josh Mann be the City of Lancaster's representative to the Antelope Valley College District's Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee. And God help you.
You don't like Josh?
I actually am incredibly impressed with you, and I did not start out that way, simply because me and your father were at each other's throats, and so it's difficult to see beyond the hand that's strangling you. But what I've seen in the last year, and everything that your hands have touched, it's been improved as a result. And this committee actually needs some help, because if we're going to bring the valley back together as a supportive role for that college, it really should come from this committee. I don't see it coming from the college board because of the upcoming election and everybody wanting a piece of it. This committee could do some good stuff, and I hope you're able to do that. Wish you luck in doing it, but if anybody can, it's going to be you.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay.
Can we get a clarification? I don't want to, I don't want to wrinkle anything, and I asked this of the city manager, Mark Bozignan, about whether I should abstain, because I was trying to look at the facets from the standpoint of our requirements to abstain. Mark said that he got a slice of pizza or something, and I didn't know if that kind of tipped us over the edge, and put your position on that.
They get pizza at the meeting was the only financial...
Yeah. Come this one again.
Wait a minute. This is just not fair. Could you imagine if I was voting on my son, what Mr. Pelka would be doing?
There's no speaker card, Mr. Pelka.
I mean, could you imagine?
As long as Josh is not a dependent child, then there is no conflict.
Oh, that's a...
You're showing her...
That is, that is a really broad, broad, broad... You know what?
Trust me, I have two at home, too, and I...
You know what? You know what I'm going to do? I'll just be polite, and I will abstain, because that's a broad interpretation. We just got finished having a philosophical discussion about interpretation of an ordinance here, and now we're, again, you're opening it up when you say dependent.
Mr. McEwen, this is not a paid...
Do you put her on your tax return?
No, he's not on my tax return.
Mr. McEwen, this Oversight Committee is not a paid position, there is no financial gain.
I'm going to still abstain, I think this is funny, so anyway...
We have one speaker card, Nicole Parsons.
Hi. Hey. He wouldn't let me in the, what was that? The, the business conference, he's all, he's all... But, so I say that we have a, like a war in the sandbox or whatever, I said, "Oh, no, there's a guy with another pen." I'm talking about him. He doesn't talk to me at all.
You scare him.
Huh?
You scare him.
I don't think it's that. I don't know, but, it's okay, it's all good. But what makes him eligible for the Oversight Committee to be, I mean, besides you, because, well, no, because there's two, because I just have this one in my bag, Measure R Oversight Committee, and it says that, well, I think you can elect two people, and the people are supposed to have skills or experience in construction, trade, labor, union, representative, environmental engineering, and are environmental scientists, a public or private finance expert, or a regional association of business representative, and transit system user. Well, can you, because I qualify for at least the environmental scientist and engineer...
It's either or. It's not and, it's either or. I mean, they only have to have one of those things.
So you have two? So you can, you can...
I'm not aware if I have, I think I do get two, but don't I have somebody else sitting on it?
I think there's somebody else, we will check on that, I think there is someone else.
His name is, it's Sam. Sam could be a girl or a boy, that's our...
Good night, Nicole. One abstention, the rest unanimous in favor. Can Mann abstain? Okay, congratulations. You can add this to your many things you have to do. And now we have Counselwoman Marcus on opposing AB 1288.
As I mentioned before, introduced by Assemblyman Member Fong, is that he is proposing a bill that would prohibit us as a city from requiring an employer other than one of those government entities to use an electronic employment verification system. My opposition is that we should have that option as a city, whether we would want to use that or not, and I don't appreciate being dictated to. And that's why I wanted to bring it forward and ask if you'd support in some sort of resolution.
Well, I will.
Yeah, I would move that we have the mayor write a letter to Assemblyman Fong's office, and also to the governor, saying that we're in opposition of...
In the committee?
In the committee, of whoever else we have to. So I'll make a motion that we do that in opposition of AB 1288.
I will second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. City manager, any announcements?
Yes, I do today. Kelly, if you can help me out in a second. I'm going to ask Kelvin in a moment to give a brief update on Looking Good Lancaster, and Barbara to give a brief update on the administration of our gift program, but I just wanted to take a moment. There's been a lot of really good things the city has done in the last year, a lot of cool things, a lot of things I've been personally proud of. We've been on nightly news, we've been on all the news channels national, but today we probably reached a new height in coolness. I'm going to ask you to see this. Our musical road made Rolling Stone magazine a full-page ad by Honda.
All right.
With our city's logo and sign in it. We're in Rolling Stone, there's probably not a whole lot more we can do now.
And you thought being in the front page of the Wall Street Journal was the height right there.
It's another thing off the bucket list.
It's a generational thing.
You know what? I bet you Rex would have been enthralled to be in Rolling Stone back in the seventies. He would have been just ecstatic, so...
Actually, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't into any of that stuff, you know, it came later, but not when I was supposed to. It's probably my slow maturation, I don't know.
In all seriousness, this is a really good thing for the City of Lancaster, with the population, the demographic, the commercial for Honda's been running on all sporting events, and with our logo, our name in it. And when you look at the text which we'll send out to you all, it's good, it's good positive publicity for us.
We're having a synergistic effect. It's really starting to roll. Now let's see what it brings in.
Kelvin, if you would.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I wanted to invite and announce to the community that this Saturday will be Looking Good Lancaster, April 18th, from 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. Traditionally or historically, the city has been involved in this through the Public Works Department. This year, we're doing a little twist with it. The city has what we call the Safe and Stronger Neighborhood Committee, which is made and consisting of representatives of all our city departments, so that we can get involved in creating stronger and safer neighborhoods by us getting together and figuring out how we can better do that as a city, doing, using all of our skills and our experience in the things that we do, working better as a group, versus just having one department taking that particular opportunity to our source of work. With me today is Patty Garibay, she's the chairperson of the Safe and Stronger Committee, and she's going to announce to you or describe to you the different events that is going to occur on April 18th.
I get to do the fun part. Good evening, council. As Kelvin mentioned, we have Looking Good Lancaster this weekend, we have several different projects, we're very excited for volunteers to participate in. I'll just mention a few. We have an America City cleanup, we have a couple different vacant lot cleanup projects, we're cleaning up our bleachers at Jane Reynolds Park, and we're also doing painting projects, which we're actually involving our youth in from Parkview Middle School. Along with doing the volunteer projects, in the afternoon, we'll have a volunteer barbecue to not only recognize all the people that are out there that day...
Careful, careful.
I'm sorry?
Careful.
We will have tickets for volunteers, so we know that they've actually done something throughout the day, but we will have the volunteer barbecue to recognize our volunteers, and to also give our community members an opportunity to interact, to get to know one another. With that, we'll also have a resource fair, similar to what we did at our Mariposa Community Event a couple months ago, and some of the groups that are participating in that include city organizations or resources, including Neighborhood Watch, Business Watch, our Neighborhood Revitalization Department, as well as Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and those type of groups. And then finally, we will also do a, we'll have a softball game to end the very fun day, and our Parkview Middle School students are coordinating that, and it should be a really good time. We've had a really good response from the community so far, so we're looking forward to it. We definitely have a lot of neighbors that are very excited to make a really good impact in their community, so we look forward to that.
Thank you. Wonderful.
And then Barbara has a brief update on our gift card program.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. If you've been anywhere near the lobby of City Hall or the finance counter, you've probably noticed a never-ending line of people there, waiting to come in and exchange their $300 worth of receipts for what they've purchased in the City of Lancaster, for their $30 Lancaster gift card, or their bill of sale for purchasing a vehicle here in Lancaster, for their reimbursement of their vehicle registration fees. To date, we've issued nearly 35% of our gift cards in each of the two programs. That represents 1,200 gift cards for the shop and dine program. So, in just over two weeks, we've had 1,200 people come in and get gift cards. In the last two days alone, we've had over 200 people each day. And it, the news just seems to be getting out there more and more, our phones are busier, people are here to conduct other business, wanting to know how they can get their $30 gift card, so it certainly has been, is a successful program. And the cards do seem to be doing what they were intended to do. We're getting reimbursement requests quickly from the businesses as the cards are being used. We're seeing, getting the reimbursements back from restaurants, from grocery stores, retail stores. We're seeing people buying cars and taking them and getting their windows tinted. We've seen quite a few coming from the tinting places or new tires, so it's been an incredibly successful program. I know it will be here for the next couple of weeks, and I wanted to let you know how we're doing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. People are very excited, and they don't mind waiting. And I'm sorry, I'm remiss in saying, the staff there that's dealing with the crowds are, really have really been up to the challenge, stepped up to it, keeping a positive outlook. We're getting help from the other departments. It's just amazing. I think there's probably people here who have never been in City Hall, and this is bringing them in, so it's been a great program.
How are the merchants with it? What are they saying?
They're very excited. They're happy to see their cards in, they, we've had a couple of them actually come in directly to redeem their cards, and they're very excited about the program, and excited to be a part of it and opt in. It's been very positive.
I was going to bring this up under council comments, but this would be a good time. We are receiving quite a bit of attention on our economic stimulus package, and what we're trying to do to keep businesses alive and well here in Lancaster. I did receive a call last week from District Director of Assemblymen Sam Blakesley, a woman by the name of Courtney Kino, who was born and raised in Lancaster, local girl, done good, and she'd asked for information on our economic stimulus package, because Assemblyman Blakesley was going to present a forum for local government and businesses in San Luis Obispo as to what they can do to try and thrive in this challenging time. And she thought of our program, and Mr. Lawson, I know, directed some information in their way, and they'll be using that to do a presentation of what you can do if you use your imagination and have some courage to step up and try it. See what happens when you don't copyright things.
That's right.
You guys really have got national attention on this, because it's worthy of national attention. It's, it's a phenomenal program. I just, I can't tell you how proud I am to be the mayor of a city where the staff came up with something that innovative, that quickly, and implemented, implemented and executed it so flawlessly. It was, wow.
That's right.
It's cool.
Thank you.
And we preempted New York. Yeah, we got in front of Bloomberg on the NBC nightly news. Okay, where are we? City clerk? Any announcements?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. This is the time for you to get speaker cards in. You'll find them at the back of the council chambers on the table, and you bring them up and put them in the tray next to the city attorney. We do ask that you fill the cards out very clearly, so that if the mayor, or the council, or the staff needs to get ahold of you, we will be able to read the cards and call you or address a letter to you. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you do approach the podium, you'll see three lights. A green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We do ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the council meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation in this. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Pelka?
I'm hereby requesting, since approximately eighteen years ago, Mr. Gilly was so prominent in bringing the prison up here in the first place, that we named the prison after him, the Lancaster slash Jim Gilly Prison. It seems to be a very fitting opportunity for the city to actually name something after him, as opposed to a park that nobody really wants to see put in his name, since, I feel it's very appropriate, after all. But I, you know, I kind of see that you're not going to be doing that sincere in business with him, so, I don't know. Just the way I see things. That's all I have to say.
Cleo Goss.
How are you? Good evening. Commons at Quetzal, is the name of the, one of the supercenters proposed to be built across...
How are you? Good evening. Commons at Quartz Hill. Is the name of one of the supercenters proposed to be built across the street from Quartz Hill High School. This name is offensive, since not one inch of this commercial center will be built on actual Quartz Hill property. And just like Lancaster objected to the city name being associated with the prison, Quartz Hill residents and business owners object to Quartz Hill name being associated with a Lancaster commercial site. This name may fool patrons into thinking the commercial center is the Quartz Hill Business District and cause urban decay as the supercenter projects bring declining sales for Quartz Hill stores, forcing store closures. The 2008 Economic Analysis Report found in the draft EIR evaluated the effect of these proposed supercenters at the intersection of Avenue L and 60th Street West and what they would have on existing Lancaster and future stores. From as far away as five miles, this includes the Amargosa Creek Project on L and 10th, but it does not include a single Quartz Hill store located just a mile down the road. This report finds the supercenters will overstock the retail demand in the surrounding area. At 112%, restaurants and fast foods will increase to 12% above demand. At 130%, food and beverage stores will increase to 30% above demand. At 149%, building material and garden supply stores will increase to 49% above demand. And an outrageous 283% drugstore pharmacy will increase the demand by over 183%. All of these figures do not take into account the over 67 Quartz Hill businesses, which includes equivalent store types, with five convenience stores, two restaurants, three fast foods, two pizza shops, a building materials store, a garden center, and a pharmacy, all of which are located on 50th Street West, just a mile down the road. Do we need this overabundance of stores when so many Antelope Valley stores are struggling to stay afloat? This economic report claims the oversupply will likely be balanced by a continual residential growth through 2014. In case you haven't heard, the housing boom has stopped and will likely not restart until all the current inventory of new and foreclosed homes have been sold. With all the housing and credit problems, why commercialize this West Side residential area with multiple discount shopping centers and depress this once desirable neighborhood? A recessed retail demand requires less shopping, not more, as consumers in this uncertain market are saving more and spending less, which may very well prolong the recession. Retail analysis analysts predict as many as 200,000 large and small retail stores will be forced out of business in 2009 due to their own debt and the global credit crunch. Why deliberately force established Quartz Hill businesses into closure for no added value to the community?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Speaker.
Ms. Goss, question for you, please. I think I can ask this question because it has nothing to do with the EIR, and it has to do with the naming, that has nothing to do with it. But do you live in the city of Lancaster?
No, I live in Quartz Hill.
Okay, thank you.
I'm offended.
Thank you.
All the businesses I've talked to in Quartz Hill are offended, because not a single one of them was included in the economic report.
Ms. Goss, I do want to point out one thing. I, for one, am okay with the name of the prison being Lancaster, because every now and then I turn on the television and I see Lancaster tattooed across the back of people. And I'm thinking, you know, it's hard to buy that type of advertising.
While we have two objectives, to the prison being Lancaster, we object to the commercial center doing to our community.
Ms. Goss, I don't disagree with you. I think those are valid concerns, and don't ever let anything I say indicate to you that I'm discounting that. And when the proper time comes when I'm allowed to discuss it, I think you kind of know what my views are. But I totally get, if I was a businessperson in Quartz Hill, I would be outraged. And don't let a different point of view mean, indicate to you that I don't see the validity of your point. All right?
There's plenty of open land, unlike.
I understand.
Nice, not realizing.
I understand.
There's vacant land all around the high school.
I understand that. Thank you. Bill Door? Is it Door? Did I pronounce it right?
Billy.
Okay, good. How are you?
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, first of all, I would like to thank you for all that you have done for the city of Lancaster and continue to do.
Thank you.
And the only reason I am here is, it is America, and I also agree with shopping Lancaster. But when I go into a store and I get this, all in Spanish, and I ask the manager, I said, "I can't read this." He says, "Look at the pictures." And that just kind of, you know, you're trying to beef up business, and as far as I'm concerned, I have a grandson overseas fighting for this country, and this is just not right. But like I said, I thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
May I ask what store that is?
Home Depot.
I'm sorry, what store?
Home Depot.
Home Depot? Home Depot?
Give it to the council.
You know, Mark, there are some really interesting studies that are done projecting what the demographics are going to look like in 10 years, what the Spanish-English ratio is going to be. And I'm curious if perhaps we shouldn't obtain those and make them available to people so that we have a clear understanding of where we're going. I mean, there's a great deal of science that is projecting where it's going, so that we at least have a, you know, floor to start talking, you know. But I can see why people get concerned about that, you know.
Yeah, Southern California Association of Governments would have that kind of projections and some others, so we can certainly make those available or direct people to those sites if they're interested.
I would like it so that it's easy to get to from the city site, if we could do that. Okay? All right, thanks. Eric, I can't read the last name. Couldn't read it last time either, could I?
No, you couldn't.
Sorry.
This council loves talking about crime, so I'm going to focus this tension about that. When you bring a giant supercenter into an area, you are attracting crime to it. There was a time when Henry Huns was mayor, and to main, to handle the crime going on the East Side Walmarts, they had, he had to pay for a sheriff to be there until they got a hand that he had to get the LA County to then get, to have a 48-hour cop on that spot. And it was found somewhere in the city's website, they could find it. There was an article not long ago about a gang, named gang, that had, that was found in Santa Clarita, that was involved in many crimes at Walmarts here in Lancaster. It involved theft, anything you could mention whatsoever. When, not only that, this new Walmart that's being proposed, I noticed that there's at least going to be one bank in the Walmart, and maybe even a possible bank outside of it, just stationary, where you can just walk in from outside, which means that would become very actionable for anyone wanting to rob it. And of course, you know, when they make a run for it, all of a sudden, they go to its surrounding neighborhoods, which makes that location Quartz Hill High School. Here was part of an article that was about the prison being proposed here, about the thousand prisoners being sent here. And the mayor said, "I think the people of the Antelope Valley are incredibly committed when it comes to public safety. This project on L and 60th West is one of them." Here's an article back on April 4th, Intruder Triggers School Search. And of course, students put on lockdown at Quartz Hill, and here's some policemen searching the campus for this person. If this is really proposed, we're overly used to seeing a lot of articles about Quartz Hill being on lockdown, and we'll remember the city council who voted for this being.
Thank you.
Gerald Biak.
Thank you, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Smith, council members, staff. My name is Gerald Biak, around 652C Amboise Uncle Court, Palmdale. I'm here to talk about MetroLink. The only place in Lancaster more cordial than MetroLink is a morgue. I was over there looking around for some information, none available, the MetroLink station. We waited on a Friday for a train to come through, it goes arrive in Lancaster at 11:27. At 12:00 noon, there still wasn't there. No sign up when the train would arrive. You know, we have the most modern communication system in the known domain, but yet we can't communicate from one station to the next on MetroLink. My wife and I went down to Vera Street. There was more Spanish stock during the train than was at Vera Street. And we were sort of amazed at that, and we enjoyed the church that's built in 1741 down there at Vera Street. I've been in California since 1935, my first trip to Vera Street, my wife's first trip. So I think it behooves the council to call MetroLink on the carpet and give some help to people out there at the station. The Grayhorn Station was closed, there was no one there to punch anything in. We had to ask some handyman there to help us get a ticket, because the deal faces east, you can't read the screen. It faces east ever since they built the station, you know? There's time for change. Call the MetroLink people up here and ask why. My wife had a daughter come from Austin, Texas, to LAX. She had a friend in Burbank, met her at LAX, stayed overnight, came aboard the MetroLink station, train in Burbank. Does this go to Lancaster? Yep, goes to Lancaster. Conductor said it did. Guess what? She arrived at Benetton Princess, all people get off. Far as the train goes, she had to wait for another hour for the next train to come through. So I think MetroLink can improve their service to Lancaster. And all you council members and people in public service, remember, when you're kicked in the backside, you're meaning you're out in front. That's what it means.
Yeah, he makes some good points, and I think perhaps what we should do is send some people over there that know about these things to look at what improvements need to be made, and then we should present it to them. As far as them knowing where their trains are, if they knew where their trains are, a lot more people would be alive today than there were, remember? I mean, it's not the best job in the world, they do.
We can contact them and work with them on some of those issues.
Okay.
Well, we didn't know whether that train's going to arrive at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, or when. And if it arrives here late, it's much later to get, arriving in Los Angeles, you have a quick turnaround, you don't have time to do a turnaround in Los Angeles, you know?
No, I totally agree with you. I think they could do a lot better job than they're doing. So we'll have somebody look at that? You know, they used to do a better job when you worked there, Mark, but since you've left, it's just gone to heck.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. That's where we got him, you know?
For the record, MTA. We funded MetroLink.
Okay. That's right. Robert Teller.
I didn't clarify on that what I wanted to talk on, but I'm in total agreement with you on the prison. And as Will Rogers says, all I know is what I read in the newspapers. I read that they have 24% of the prison inmates are special needs inmates. I'd like to know if we could find out what the exact number was. Percentage points can be a little elusive.
My understanding is going to reach 1,800, isn't that correct?
If you want to do the math, they said 30% of 171,000 inmates.
Oh, you mean for the entire system? I thought you had to exist yard for.
They said 24% of everybody in the system. That could be a large number or a small number, according to how many we got in the system, and according to what I read in the newspaper, the prison system's overstocked right now.
Well, we certainly have more people in American prisons than any other civilized country in the world.
I think outside of China.
A civilized country in the world.
I understand. The other question I had was, the newspaper said that we were looking into methods or means of doing something about this. When the prison was first built out here, I got here in 1970, and I watched all this go on. The prison system, the state board of prisons, deal, lied to us from the very beginning and said another prison was being developed in Los Angeles at the same time, and they built up here first. And then they said, "Oh, we couldn't afford the land down there, we can't build it there." So then we're stuck with the prison, and all the other people that they couldn't get down there, they set up here. Since we have two attorneys present, is it possible for the city to get an injunction against the state board of prisons until they come up with the facts and figures we need to know what's going on in our own community?
I suspect not, but I don't know the answer to that. And what I can tell you is that we're going to be looking at that more aggressively than it's ever been looked at before. However, it's extremely difficult to get those types of injunctions. That doesn't mean that we won't try, and it doesn't mean that we're not going to put them through, you know, legal hell for a while. You know, I kind of know how to do that. And that's the goal. I mean, the goal is, is to quit just taking it, we're going to start fighting back and see where it takes us.
Yeah, I don't know how to stop these people, but I agree with you, they totally are disregarding our wishes or our community, and that does create crime.
You know, I don't really care that they don't pay attention to our wishes. What I do care about is they're not paying attention to the safety of our children, and they know that they're doing that.
Our community is the future of our children.
That's right.
Yes.
And I think it's incumbent upon every one of us to protect our children with any means necessary.
I agree with you.
And if we know they're being threatened, we should act. So let's act.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Paul.
So who was the fresh one you were talking about?
Pardon me, sir?
Who was the fresh one you were talking about?
Oh.
Never mind.
I'll reserve my comments. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, first of all, I just want to say thank you for that gang takedown, Captain Anderson, thank you. That was inspirational, that's what we're looking for. I was also inspired this week to be an American with our Navy SEALs, taking out those pirates with three kill shots. I don't think that's ever been done from a floating platform, and it's just incredible. It makes me proud to be an American.
At night.
At night, too.
At night, in rough seas.
We have some problems here that I love to be involved in, and I just wanted to read you one other thing, and by way of appreciation, from the letter that wasn't published about the Lancaster-Palmdale square off. Without meaning offense, let me say to Palmdale that I propose we all score the rivalry, draw and drop it. You can take with delight that Lancaster contributes to the new supercity steering process, a mayor that does not recognize the existence of a weak mayor in any form, and a battle-tested city staff that despite distracting and debilitating internal political conflicts, steered our city ship to safer shore. city's ship to safer shores than you have washed up on. So I think that's what I wanted to say in way of thanks again. We have challenges, we have challenges. Even taking down the gang creates a vacuum. There are so many problems, and I want to come to the city and offer my services, and I don't have the entire program ready to lay out, but I will in the next week. We need to take control, and I have some ideas. I don't want my children hurt. You know, it's very frustrating as an American to not be able to go to the person responsible, just like you. But I'll tell you what, if someone hurts my child, I'm going to put my fist through their face. And if it's some pervert, I need society to let me at him. I mean, this is just how I feel on an emotional level. So if we're going to protect the people that are the offenders and not respect the rights of the people that need to feel safe, this is all part of the future that we're going to have to discuss. And I know I'm being a little evasive, but there are ways that we're going to do this, and I'm going to bring them forward in the future. So thank you for everything you're doing, and I just want to be more proactive and go get them in ways that are going to actually work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes all the speaker cards, is that right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good. Vice Mayor Smith, you have a report?
Couple of reports there in front of you if you have any questions. The AVTA report is one. The other one is the Joint Powers Authority High Desert Corridor, which includes San Bernardino County Supervisor Misselfelt. We have Victorville and Palmdale and Supervisor Antonovich. And that's just going, that's just a slow process, that's 20 years down the line, and making sure that we get what we need there. One that's not listed on here, and there's no actual report, I'm also on the MTA-TDA Article 8 Hearing Committee. And what that is, is that there's actual transportation dollars that we have along with Prop A money and Prop C money, and then there's TDA Article 8. And we have to do hearings to see if there's any unmet transportation needs. And as long as there's no unmet transportation needs, then the city of Lancaster can use those to actually fix our roads and other transportation. We usually have enough money from Proposition A and C money. And so I went to two of them already, Santa Clarita and City of Palmdale. We have one this Friday in the city of Lancaster, and then I have to go to Avalon, and that's the last one. And then the Hearing Board will put, I really didn't want to, so we had to, and then we'll make a recommendation to the MTA. So that's it for the reports.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I have a comment. I read in the paper today that the district attorney did not file on 10 of the felons that were arrested in the gang sweep because of insufficient evidence. That is not true. That is inaccurate. I was with the officers when they did that, those raids in the morning. There wasn't any question in anybody's mind that these officers were risking their lives. Wasn't any doubt about that. It was the entire feeling throughout these 400 officers, it was very apparent that this was very, very serious. There are probably some good reasons why the district attorney was unable to file against those 10. But to say it was because of insufficient evidence is sliding those officers, and they are sliding them with something that is simply not true. Hopefully, the real reasons, and I think they're probably very good reasons, I think we are blessed with one of the finest district attorneys in the country. But it is simply wrong to say that those charges were not filed because of lack of sufficient evidence. And I want to make that very clear to everyone, that that was inaccurate, and it is sliding those officers who were absolutely risking their lives. Anytime they do an entry on a wanted felon who's a parolee and a member of a gang, this, I mean, this was a horrible gang. It was incredible that they were able to accomplish that entire operation without anyone getting hurt. And then to make that comment out of expediency, and all it was was political expediency to say that, is just simply wrong. And I want at least your guys to know that this council does not approve of that type of press release. That is not to say that the district attorney's office didn't have very real reasons why they were unable to process those. But to say that, I think I've said enough. And now, Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home. We're going to adjourn till April 28 at 6:00 p.m., and we're adjourning this meeting in memory of Lieutenant Colonel David Cooley, U.S. Air Force retired Lancaster resident and veteran Lockheed Martin pilot. He was killed on a test mission at Edwards Air Force Base on March 25, 2009. A reminder to all of us that these men are still engaged in incredibly heroic, dangerous work. And the fact that we were fortunate in not seeing this regularly is a testament to their professionalism, not through the lack of danger. When I was a boy here, this was something you saw several times a year. Now you can go a decade without seeing it, but it doesn't change the fact how dangerous what these guys do for us is. Thank you. I hope to see you all April 28 at 6:00 p.m., including Mr. Pelco. You're welcome to come back.